Damn right.
Alright, let's do that again. It's a great thing in Arlington. Here we go again. It's a great day in Arlington. Alright, the prayer. Andy, you have the... Hand Andy the mic, Mike, please Tom?
Let's pray. My Father, Lord God, we just thank you so much for this chance to come together and to fellowship and break bread together and celebrate our great city of Arlington. And Lord, we know that it's because of you that it's a great day in Arlington. Father, we thank you for the leadership we have in the city with leaders such as Mauricio and that he can speak with us today. Help us, Lord, to do your will, to look at ways to serve you and to make the city even greater. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Tom, hand the mic to Dan Dawkins, please.
Okay gentlemen, don't forget there's a pause after God, not after "One Nation". Ready?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation of God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for the national anthem. Thank you, have a seat. Alright, do we have any guests? Have you guys brought the guests today? Looks like the answer is no. Come on, start bringing guests, we need more. We want to get more members. Alright, birthdays. I know we got birthdays here. In April, on the 4th, we had David Mosby. Today is Kent Couch's birthday, but I don't see Kent here. Martin Kelly on the 15th. Randy Hendricks on the 17th. Steve Willey on the 30th. Martin Kelly, are you here? Alright, you can stand up, we're gonna sing "Happy Birthday" to you. You've just gotta do it. Alright, here we go.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Ron. Happy birthday to you.
Alright, cheers. Alright. Alright. Regarding future speakers, Victoria Farhamires is going to speak in May and she can't make it, so your leadership team is exploring a number of different options for our future speakers coming up, May, June, July, et cetera, et cetera. If you have a recommendation, talk to myself or to Barry Bondurant or to Jeff Cassell and give us your thoughts and we'll give it consideration. Alright. Okay, our speaker today... We all know this guy. So, ladies and gentlemen, your city council person from number one, Mauricio Galante. Let's give him a round of applause.
Well, I'm among friends here, I'm a member of the club, right? So, I just wanna speak with you guys today from the heart and as in a friend level. And I hope you, we share some ideas. And if you have any questions, I'll be at the end so we can talk more. How long we have here to talk about it?
About thirty minutes, round numbers.
Yeah, I'll do it longer, whatever works. We're gonna split in three parts of five minutes. And talk a little bit about me, who I am, and talk about the one year in office. What did I learn, so what I'm still learning. And then five minutes talk about what's going on in the city of Arlington. And then we'll come fifteen minutes for the questions. So if you feel okay with that, right? Thank you. Well, my name is Mauricio Galante. Funny name, I'm Brazilian, I'm from Brazil. I was born in Brazil. Came to U.S., thirty-three years old, so it's been twenty-two years already. And I'm a United States, became citizen in 2011. It's been a while here. So when I came, I lived in Connecticut for nine years. It took me nine years to figure out where Texas was and then I came as fast as I could. And followed up Arlington. So previously, I served the Brazilian Navy in Brazil. I was Lieutenant Commander for the Navy. And I was a skydiving paratrooper, skydiving instructor. And that's when I made my first career. Well, my first career was in the Navy. My second career was, I had a skydiving business in Connecticut. So almost five thousand jumps. There's old skydivers and dumb skydivers, right? So I quit before I get old. You know, so you know what I mean? You can find both. So, my kid was born and said I'm gonna change careers. And I figured out to invest in golf, so I became passionate about golf. And I purchased the golf center in Arlington, actually, in my life. In 2014. Remember that family golf center down on Collins and Green Oaks? The family golf center behind the apartments there? And that's the property we purchased. So it was built in 1986. It was kind of in complete damage repair. And then we had to do everything, started from the ground up, so now we built the business to twelve thousand memberships. And, you know, Briggs here is my marketing guy, help us out. And it's been a success, so this has been a success. I broke a couple barriers, right? So when I came from Brazil here, I have no English. So you see, my English is pretty bad still, right? But it was worse, though. But it was worse, okay? Yeah. Unfortunate, unfortunate sequence of events, I came to the U.S., really hundred dollars in my pocket, with a promise for a job. Three days later, where's the job? We had no job. I had to live in a tent for six months in Florida, packing parachutes, painting walls, dishwashing, do everything I could to survive. So I had the experience of how to get to the United States with nothing. And I bring with me every day that I don't take anything for granted. Nothing I take for granted, because I know where it should come from, nothing, right? Yes, I had already a college in information systems. I'm a system engineer, computer engineer, in master's information system. But I went through everything I should, right? Until I got a job and got my green card through work, through specialty work. And then had my business. I sold the business there and then I came to Arlington not knowing anything about golf, how to operate a golf place. On the skydiving business, we built the business from nothing. I sold to another company and now they expand to other companies. And that's, I made my little fortune jumping out of planes, right? And when we came here, I became the first Brazilian to own a skydiving company in the U.S. There's probably two and a half million Brazilians in the United States today. Texas has forty thousand. Biggest states that have Brazilians are Massachusetts, Boston area, around two hundred thousand. Florida, there's a lot of them, Fort Lauderdale south, and also Orlando. There's people also in Pennsylvania and people in Los Angeles. So Brazilians basically don't know Texas, right? In the city of Arlington, I know probably ten Brazilians, the entire city. So, and it's an honor to me to be representing. Everybody asks, "Oh, I'm the first Brazilian elected official in Texas." And the only one in the United States Brazilian elected official that hold an office today, right? There was two other people that I got elected before in the Boston area. Our Brazilians, they got elected. And it's, "Oh, amazing, you represent the Brazilian community", right? No, I represent the Americas, alright? I'm happy to do Brazilian too, right? And then when we started the golf businesses here, I also became the first Brazilian to own a golf center and become a golf instructor, golf professional. And it's been a blessing to me, so... And then came the opportunity to, once we built the golf center, we became top fifty in the nation. There's almost five thousand driving ranges, golf centers in the U.S. And you know that system, the top racer that you see on TV when he tries to shots? So that system started right here in Arlington with me. So I called this guy in Sweden in 2014. And I saw on TV, I say, "Man, let's do this for drivers, for golf centers", right? He said, "No, we have to tweak the technology." And then ten months later, I kept calling, he said, "Man, I'm gonna do something." So this guy stopped calling me, right? Bugging me, right? And then we installed over here, so he tested in Stockholm. Stockholm was a success. And then we installed the first one in the world right here in Arlington. And today, we have that same system you see on TV for twelve hundred golf centers in the entire world in thirty-five countries. And that's where we started everything in Arlington. So business was good and then the community came out, say, "Hey, you know, we have the city council election company. Why didn't you put your name in there?" I say, "What is this?", right? "No, just put your name there, we'll tell later", right? It's pretty much what happened, right? And you know, the second phase is how I got elected in one year in office. That'll be the second part, right? So basically, the golf business, we came to a point that we want to redevelop the property. The property's been built forty years, so there's a lot of bankers. And then we applied to get a hotel built, a little resort, eighty-seven rooms. So now we have all the permits, everything. I'm just, you know, I just need a fast driver now so I can build the hotel. If one of you guys are a fast driver, talk to me after this year, okay? And we actually got the zoning. We have a commissioner here. We got the zoning, it was not an easy thing, so we got nine zero against, and then we had to go back. So basically, I had to go to council three times to get my project going. And I thought to myself, you know, I want to invest twenty million dollars here in the city with my money and generate jobs. Shouldn't be that hard, right? And then I start thinking, what can I do? I can run for office, right? And then that was my first interest, you know? When I see things that are done one way, and I did that in skydiving, I did that in golf, and I'm trying to doing the city, also city business, right? But I see things that can be done in a better way, more efficient way. And that's what I love. I love challenge, right? So I'm a former professional skydiver, but the skydiving didn't come, you know, didn't get out of me. I still have that thrill-seeking mentality and I love challenging. Give you something difficult and then you're gonna get involved and committed to it. So that's why I run for office. And you know, the election was like a lot of questions, people, "Who is this guy?", right? I mean, "Where he came from? What is he doing?", right? And being a resident in the city for ten years, I confess, it was a surprise and an honor to have the trust of so many people to be elected in office. So with my election, not only being the only Brazilian elected in Texas, also the city became majority-minority. Sorry, minority-majority. Because you now have Vietnamese in the council, that Long Fe is part of the group here, right? And then we have myself, Brazilian, native. You have Raul Gonzalez, Spanish. And then you have from the black community, two from the black community. And this is a testament what the city of Arlington became. So the city became more diverse. There's hundred different nations, cultures here in the city, right? So international border, it's still under works, one day it's gonna be a reality, right? So that we can celebrate all those cultures, all those all these people that come out and elect Arlington to be their city, right? Their home city. And every one of us, and I believe I do a little bit, I bring a different perspective. And having that perspective, it's always, it's always progress is achievable. Because you gather different ideas, and different perspectives, and you get along, and that's why the city is so amazing. It is the American dream city, you know? And I'm a testament of this, right? One thing that marked me really hard during the election, and I excuse if I get emotional about it, you know, my election, I thought about, you know, how many people walking, knock every single door for every voter in the district, right?
Nobody.
Yeah, we met it out there, it was like forty-five hundred people that vote consistently, every single election, right? And I say, "I'm gonna knock every single door", right? And I did not. I knocked around at twenty-one hundred doors, right? Two thousand doors. And then every political consultant said, "You know, you go on these guys here because those are the guys that go in the clubs." The CNN Club, the Arlington Republican Club, right, where's, you left already, right? Arlington Republican Club, those are the people that vote, so you gotta talk to them and say, "You know, if I see people here, you know, on those apartments, you know, apartments are issue enough for Arlington, right?" And I say, "No, let me go here from these people", right? Because it is, you know, it's a high crime rate on the apartments, you know? And these people living under the, under conditions that nobody wants to live with, right? And I say, "I'm gonna go talk to them, at least I get their perspective", right? And I knock every single door in apartments. And a lot of people say, "Man, I live here, I live here for thirty years, I vote every single election, nobody ever came and knocked on my door." And that told me that there is a lot of voices out there in Arlington that come out and vote and do their homework. But unfortunately, you know, it's not only Arlington, but it's in the entire country. So the elected officials are not reachable, right? For some reason, you mail, you get nothing. You call them, you get nothing. Get an assistant, try to, and a senior, enough is enough. When I get there, if you want to reach me, I'm one text message away. That's why I put my cellphone number on my campaign material, and I have all my cards. I gave my cards away today for a couple people. You can text me, I won't text, text away. Just don't call me, because there's two hundred callers a day. The best way to talk to me is to text me, "Hey, I'm here, and as soon as I can, I get back to you." And that's what I did. And one lady told me, when I opened the door, and she said, "You know, I already voted on you." It was early voting, I vote by mail, but I'm glad I had the chance to meet you. Can I give you a hug? And I said, "Yeah", you know? Because out of ten doors that you knock out there, five of them knock, you know, shut the door in your face. Let's get out of here, alright? And there was... And there's the ones like, "Okay, are you a Republican or Democrat?" I say, "You know, this is a nonpartisan election." "Ah, I don't care." Boom, shut the door in my face, right? And that's how people are these days, right? The political establishment is being hurting so much. This great nation that I call home, the United States of America, right? That people are disheartened, you know? They can't trust anymore. And I open the door and she's like, "Hey, you know, I voted on you, can I give you a hug?" "Yeah", right? What's the catch? She gave him a hug and she said, "You know, I just have one thing to ask you. So do not forget where you came from." That's what she asked me. Do not forget where you came from. And I made my promise, and I, every day, I try to be humble. And yes, there's a lot of cocktails, a lot of parties, a lot of events, VIP events. Right, there's this, you come out and speak with people. But every day, I sit down and do my prayer before I start my work. And I tell myself, "Do not forget where you came from." I read the Bible and I ask God to make me an instrument of his will. And we've been accomplishing a couple things already in one year of office, right? So that's a little bit about where I came from and how I got elected to the city of Arlington. Now let me tell you guys what's going on, and then we open for questions and we'll go from there. Well, one year in office. So I got elected in May 4th, 4th last year. And May 14th, I took over. So basically, when we got to the city, there's a lot of things that going on. So you know, a lot of you guys live here for a while. There's a lot of things going on. You don't want to jump in the wagon and try to change things because you have big ideas, right? Because you're no better than anybody else, alright? So I figured out that in the first day. I say, "Okay, these people are working hard." So the city is run professionally. Yes, it is. There is three thousand employees. You have a city manager. And no matter who you are, you can have big ideas, but you get elected. You get to have nine votes, you get to have eight other votes. So it's the mayor and the other city councils. Your idea can be the best idea in the world, but if you cannot sell it to somebody, right? If you cannot convince all the guys, it's not gonna be permitted. So basically, first year, everybody says, "Okay, what are you gonna do?" I say, "I don't know what I don't know, so I'm just gonna watch and see what the others do", right? And then first couple months, just going to those meetings and seeing how people operate, how they talk, okay? What's the formalities? At the beginning, I'm a guy that I like to walk and talk to everybody and I'm a really people person. And there's a level for me that I see the staff looking, "I mean, this guy thinks this is a private business." No, it's the city, right? And they have a level for me that I'm not understanding. It's like, why they, you know, they treat me this way, right? I want them to treat me like a buddy, you know? But then I figured out, it's not like a buddy thing. So they look at you, that you are policymaker. You have a responsibility. You are store of the money, right? That's eight hundred fifty million dollars that comes to the city budget, right? On taxes, sales taxes and everything. You are the store of that money. So you are there for three things on provide safety, public safety, right? Provide services, which is infrastructure, right? Water, electricity, all this stuff. And make sure the money is being spent wisely and efficiently. And that's why my business experience comes handy, right? So I know how to develop a sheet, right? I know how to, you know, make more with less. Remember, when I came to U.S., I had nothing. So I had to eat. One week I had fifteen dollars to eat for the entire week. Yeah, it was noodles and a couple, a couple things for four months when I started here. So I understand what is, the times are challenging for us. And when I look things, I say, "Why we cannot do this?" And I'll tell you guys, the first couple months, I attended Texas Municipal League, which is a very good program that I went to Houston, actually, three days. Then you learn about financial policies, public policy, financial in an open meetings act, which is really all the formalities for how you do for public hearings and everything. And there's a lot of this. When I got there, I thought, you know, "Why we don't do this real quick? Just take this and do this." No, you have all those formalities because you want to create public records in everything you do. Every phone call you make, every text message you send, every mail you send, every decision you make, there's the records. Not only one, two, three, there's a backup of, backup of, backup of a record. Because the moment we need to be accountable for the money, your money, my money too. I leave your money to pay taxes too. I pay double, right? I have a house and I have a business in Arlington, right? There's accountability. And that's very, very important. So I now, one year after, I understand why the government runs a little slower. Trust me, it's way slower than I want, alright? But I understand why it runs slower in the government. Because there's the accountability factor. We creating, we creating records in everything we do, right? So, those are the first three months. And I, things that I'm doing that I think is to the advantage of everybody. I'm holding a public town hall every six months. We did one in October, October 17th last year. We're gonna do now April 17th and October 16th. Basically, I chose to do one week before any primary election or municipal election or the national election. So that way, in case we have any questions about it, like we have now on the ball of action, right? I have the opportunity to do a town hall and be close to my constituents, right? And I lived in North Arlington for eleven years. And we have this, so people complain, "Hey, you know, when are you gonna do a town hall?" So that's what we're doing. And those are the things I'm doing different. So I am going to every single ribbon cutting for a small business in the city. So being a small business owner in the city, and last year we won the Minority Business Award, right? And Minority Business Award in the city of Arlington. So our business is being very fortunate, and my wife, actually, my wife runs the business, right? I can't arrest her. You know how it goes, right? You know, you know how it goes, right? And told my wife that way, so, you know, right?
She's great.
Exactly. I marry her, so I marry her, I'm fine. She's an oral doctor cancer, oral cancer doctor, and she sits on the board on the convention business bureau. And that's what we are. We are hospitality business owners and we bring that perspective. But anyways, Justin Mayo has restaurants, he has a law firm in restaurants. And I have a small business and that kind of help. And I say, "You know what? When I get there, I'm gonna be the voice for this small business." So, and Jeff is here, so he's one of the chairman of commerce, right? What do they call? Ambassador, ambassador. And I'm there, every single ribbon cutting. And that experience is being crucial for me to create connections to small businesses. Especially the ones that are just opening a business in the city. You'd be surprised when you go there and talk to those guys, several people that came from out of the blue, right? I just hop on my car from California, me and my wife and my daughter, and I'm opening this business here. And you go there and they're so grateful to see you, like a city official, right? And it's like, and that's one of the highlights that I've been seeing the last year. So I went to eighty-six ribbon cuttings in one year. And just last week, we had two, and Briggs over there too, all the time. And it's a great opportunity, right? And we start helping some businesses, right? We had the opportunity to help some business to not only expand, open second locations, but also keep that going. So that's the thing that I'm doing. I'm kind of the small business guy in the council, right? Other things are very dear for me. I'm gonna go over here, the police, I have the police report. Forgive if I missed a couple numbers, but, you know, we are working to get a north station, police north station. Tell me when I have ten minutes to go, okay? Ten minutes, then I quit.
You're close.
I'm close, okay.
We got ten minutes.
Okay, yeah. And that's why I'm speaking fast, because I'm, there's the time. So anyways, North Police Station, it's on the works, I visited a couple times. Yes, I'm sending mail almost every week. "Hey Nora, what's going on? Where's the deadline?" To be open in the spring next year to have a North Police Station, it's long overdue and we're working to deliver that, okay?
Will that be at Lamar?
Lamar, yes. Where it used to be the...
Kroger grocery or whatever?
Yeah, exactly.
Is that by Pickle Mountain though?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's across the street from the War Park.
Hurricane Park.
Used to be the...
Oh, okay, okay. Lamar Ascension.
Yes, Ascension, Lamar Ascension, yeah. So that's one of the things that I'm involved in that. We're glad that we accomplished bringing the Grand Prix of Arlington. Right, Grand Prix of Arlington, that's formal Indy. You guys know that?
We won front row seats, by the way.
March 15th next year, we're gonna have Grand Prix of Arlington. In around the stadiums, you're gonna have those formal indies. They're gonna be flying at two hundred miles per hour at the road six flags.
They do it already?
And that was an opportunity, yeah. That was an opportunity.
Oh, very true.
The city of, the city, San Petersburg in Florida, that's what they have for the last twenty years. And they, the contract was up, the opportunity came out, and the council worked really quick to seize the opportunity. And now they are here for the next five years. Every event will bring fifty million dollars economic impact for the city. Yes, it's great. Yeah, that's a big deal. So we do have, we do have, you know, a couple openings that was actually approved before I got to council. But those openings of the Metropole Museum that opened the other day, plus the convention center in the hotel, Long Ranger's Way, those are things that are visible to everybody. What is not visible, right? What is not visible are the amount of economic development deals that are being done in the city, right? So you talk about Cummings Electric, right? E-Space. E-Space, those guys, where it used to be the Simmons Building, right, across the street from the old stadium. So those guys are gonna build a six hundred thousand square feet hangar at the airport to build satellites. So they're building satellites in Arlington, right? And, I mean, this is a high-paid jobs, you're talking about almost twelve hundred jobs. Everybody there, the minimum salary is a hundred twenty grand per year. You're talking about engineers, people from over the world, right? And then we're talking about Long Ranger's Way here, right? We're talking about Long Ranger's Way. I mean, they just opened up there. Yes, it's apartments in North Arlington, right? I know, but you know, the leasing goes from three thousand dollars to seven thousand dollars, right? Cleveland, we're talking about it, right?
Most expensive rents in town.
Exactly, you know? And now we're talking about you bringing those engineers, you're bringing those high-paid job people that are gonna stay in Arlington and leave money here. Think about every time... Think about every time the city went from two thousand twenty-two, uh, for now, from three, three hundred ninety-five thousand people to four hundred eleven thousand people. Now we have sixteen thousand more people in two years, right? So I don't see Arlington being a million, a million people, but I can see twenty-five years, uh, twenty-five, thirty years, uh, to be six hundred thousand people. You know, if we continue bringing, especially the great southwest that needs more, uh, more, uh, you know, there's vacancy there, it needs more company to come and, 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 and bring business there, so we can have more people living and working here in Arlington, right? And those are the things. Yeah, the soccer World Cup's coming. Uh, uh, we're gonna have nine games, and, uh, once and I found it's gonna be a district one. I've been working, uh, closely with the police to understand how the public safety is, so I, I, I was actually, at the day they have the, 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 the terror attack in, uh, in Louisiana, in, what's the name of the city?
New Orleans.
New Orleans, I was there, me and my wife, my kids, I'm there the same day. December thirty-first, I was there, 'cause I went to the Second Bourbon Museum with my kid, right? And then we went out to Bourbon Street, and Lucas like, oh man, I don't like this, let's go. Six hours later, it happened, right? And then, and I made a comment to my wife, I swear to God, I said, no, a lot of people here, right? There's no barrier, no cars here, no police here, bingo, you know? I jinxed it, I'm sorry, you know? But still, and, uh, and we're working hard to get those barriers installed, and collings everywhere. That way, we don't have that kind of opportunity, right? So those are the things. I'm gonna take, uh, on the sixteen, I'm gonna be all day for work taking, uh, uh, Space Economy. So I made friends with, uh, with Gaza, so he's, uh, he's the commissioner of the space, uh, uh, Space Commission, Texas State, Texas State Space Commission. And then to understand what is the business behind the space economy and opportunities that we can, we can bring business to Arlington, right? And the police, so one of the things with the police, so, you know, uh, there was a lot of discussion last year, September, October, that came about the, the number of, uh, of fatalities, right? Traffic crash fatalities. Basically, two thousand eighteen, Arlington had seven thousand crashes with, uh, twenty-five fatalities, right? And twenty-three, uh, we had, uh, six thousand crashes, thousand less crashes. And a lot of people say, oh, after the red light, they get rid of the red light law, right? There's more crashes, that's not true, we have less crashes today. So that means the red light is not the cause, but we have fifty-five fatalities, twice as much fatalities. So why? So I asked the, the chief of police, say, you know why? He said, you know, speed. I say, okay, so, but now we have the city of Arlington doing like forty-seven thousand, uh, no, actually fifty-seven thousand and traffic stops. And two thousand eighteen, we're doing hundred forty thousand traffic stops. I mean, almost hundred thousand less traffic stops. And for me, it was a concern. I talked to my colleagues, and I said, okay, what can we do about it? Police ships, you know, you know, we're gonna stop policing the old school, say, yes, we do. But there's other things that it was better, because the previous government, federal government, uh, required to fill up some, some more extra paperwork after every occurrence. And then jump the, you know, uh, today, Arlington last year was eighty-one minutes is the time for a, a cop to be activated until he finished and do the paperwork and go away. And before those things, uh, back in eighteen, uh, before COVID, and all the social unrest in the nation, it was, it was not even thirty, thirty-seven, thirty-nine minutes. So it's twice as much, right? And we have seven hundred force, right? And, uh, patrol, we have two hundred forty-six, and we worked to get patrol to two seventy-four. Patrol officers in the street, more enforcement, right? But not only that, I'm looking to opportunities and technology that we can cut that time in half. Just yesterday, if you see on the work session in the afternoon, I was the one asking, hey, can we use AI? Because AI now is being used on the cameras, the body camera, that lights the report in five seconds. So the police goes there in a scene, and the AI is visiting everything, and it's putting the report, also press the button, the report is there, and then the police officer has to go just fix it, right? Just fix it, that cuts it, I mean, a job that takes twenty minutes to do is being done in five seconds. And, uh, policing Kansas is using as a power project. I've been looking at it, talking to some people, Grand Prix just started, and then we, I started the discussion internally. So we have to do something like that.
What's the cost for that?
Uh, you know, that's part of the discussion, right? Because the, the, the problem is not really the cost, it's integration. Uh, the cost is not a lot, but the body cameras have to work, integrate with everything they do. And, uh, and you know those companies, right? They wanna monopolize, right? They want to Rala and this, so they wanna, they do the Taser, the camera, and the radio. And, and you can only buy the whole package, you cannot buy separate. I mean, but AI technology is so new, pretty soon you're gonna have interfaces that communicate with different softwares, right? And we, we opened up the Real-Time Crime Center, right? Last year, uh, so just to give an idea, so homicides, uh, fell from twenty-five to, to twenty-five to fifteen, twenty-five, twenty-three to fifteen last year, homicides. Crime is down five percent, all types of crimes, right? And, and police, Arlington Police solves eighty-six percent of homicides, eighty-six percent. The national average is fifty-nine. So our police in homicide division is the best in the nation, right? And that pays off, so all the efforts they put back in the, you know, a couple of years ago on putting special units, giving more importance to special units, it's important, right? But then you have the number of crash fatalities jumping. So all the efforts and the discussions last year, September, October, uh, brought the numbers down to eighty-five thousand traffic stops last year. So we jumped from fifty-two to eighty-five, fifty percent increase, because we, uh, create policies internally to make sure that we have more traffic stops and more police patrol. Basically, the two last, uh, classes from the police, yep? Yeah, the police, they, they all went to control, right? And that's the job we do, uh, looking for new opportunities, uh, always looking to learn more. Uh, now I'm in the point that I know what I don't know. Before, I didn't know what I didn't know. Now, one year after, I know what I don't know. And I'm gonna start, continue studying, so maybe next year, I have a good idea, what can I do better? And so do you guys, I'm all over for the questions, thank you.
Okay, I'm the designated keeper of the microphone for questions, so, uh, raise your hand. I'll, I'll ask the first one while they are thinking. Uh, Marius, so you're one of several friends that I have who are small business owners in Arlington. And you do have expressed frustration, particularly in the restaurant business, but others as well, uh, with the permitting process and all that, I don't know if you experienced issues with. And curious, uh, the extent to which you think we're making progress in that area.
On permitting? Yes, one of the initiatives we're putting, uh, as a test file, the among the system is the system that we use for permitting. It's being replaced to an AI initiative from the IT department to use AI to analyze all the items that needs to be submitted and, and, and try to speed up the process on this. So we're working together with GNC, which is the head of, of the planning, and I think we'll be fantastic.
Good, great.
Behind you. Boom. I believe that. Yeah.
A few, uh, yes, you do, you said. A few, a few years, a few years ago, I know that Co consolidated all their software so that everything would be in one system. And is there any more, uh, further consolidation within the city as a whole? Uh, I know that from a management aspect, it's very handy for, uh, analyzing trends and, and getting your, your numbers so that you can, you can find out where things are going. And before, we had this quilt of all these different software programs, it's very hard to, to get them all together and actually delve into that. And, and I, I think a consolidation was probably a good idea. I mean, is that ongoing or...
Yes, ongoing, very good question, thank you. If you, uh, number one thing, uh, that I, I wanna ask you here, so if you have a phone on you to stop the phone, do you have the Ask Arlington app downloaded on your phone? Raise your hand, please, I wanna know, is everybody? The ones don't have, that don't have it, please have it. So the Ask Arlington, now we just launched the new app, we actually discussed this yesterday. And I, and I, and I helped the, the communications department on giving some feedback on, on, uh, and that's what I did for the golf, uh, system that I have. We, I'm a software, software engineer, so I can give interface, uh, feedback. Uh, this, the Ask Arlington app is actually integrated directly with the code. And then when you put up something on the Ask Arlington app, it goes directly to the dispatcher for that department. So the fastest way for you to get anything solved, from homeless encampment to, you know, for, even for police, uh, for potholes or, uh, uh, any, anything, any notification or even information from the city is to use the Ask Arlington app. Uh, se- second thing you're talking, there's things when you see the agenda, there's a lot of consent items to be approved, right? And then you see contracted this, contracted that, such, yes, the, the tendency now is to have everything consolidated. And, and a, an amazing platform that you, you could go right now and take a look and take advantage of it. To be very well informed is called opendata dot Arlington TX dot G O V. So have you been there? How many, how many of you know about the Open Data? See, we need to do a better job on communication. And I'm gonna be doing my town hall telling advice, opendata dot Arlington TX dot G O V. Everything's in there, and it is consolidated. So some departments are still lagging. We're gonna see raw conditions, all the maps from the OCI on the streets, all the, the, all the permits, the outstanding permits, the, the, all the violations, all the police reporting, all the crash data, all the traffic data. Everything is one page, opendata dot Arlington dot G O V. Very, very good. So you're looking at it, if you have any questions, shoot me a text message.
Hey, you talked about these major sporting events that are coming into Arlington. You know, we had one back when the Super Bowl come. I haven't heard any true numbers of, uh, people that are gonna be coming into the city of Arlington to attend the soccer, the Indy races. But along with those people also come with evil people.
Yep.
That wanna do crime, prostitution, gambling, all that comes in along with it. What's the anticipated number of visitors coming in for the rounds of the soccer and then for the, one of the semifinals? And how's our police force at seven hundred gonna be able to handle, let's say, are we anticipating a hundred thousand?
Yes.
What, what, okay, so you're talking about the top, higher part of Mansfield coming into Arlington. How are they gonna be able to place that and still take care of the four hundred thousand plus residents that are here?
Great question, great question, very. Uh, yes, Arlington, Arlington already have a reputation of handling those big events, and that's what we do every weekend, you know? If you see an event, like you have a Cowboys game and a Rangers game on the same day, you're gonna have those kind of amounts, a hundred thousand people. Or you're looking at three hundred thousand people for, uh, for the Formula Indy. Formula Indy is gonna be televised for two hundred different countries. And that's one aspect of economic development that I talk to a bunch of people and bring those very well, or, or, and talk. That our city is very well-known in the United States, we, we got eighteen million tourists here, right? Orlando is the biggest, uh, internal tourist destination in the US with sixty-seven million people, right? But nobody from, I mean, almost nobody from anywhere around the world, I mean, that's a very little people. It's not like Orlando, Orlando gets about five, seven million people from, from foreigners, right? From outside the US. Uh, New York gets almost nineteen million from outside the US. Uh, just to give an idea, the DFW airport has one-tenth of the number of flights of JFK. I mean, yeah, it's a huge airport, five terminals, we drive them over it, but it still doesn't compare to those guys. So all we're gonna have here, three hundred thousand for the Formula Indy, and on this World Cup event, around a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand for the event, right? But the World Cup's gonna be a different animal, because the World Cup's gonna be nine Super Bowls in a row every three days. Every three days, we have a Super Bowl. And then what happened, on, on internal meetings that I have with police and, and, and we have the North Texas Commission, uh, agents, FBI, you know, all those guys planning, and I voiced my concern, I say, you guys are very good on doing this for Rangers fans, football fans, Eagles guys, right? Uh, uh, Los Angeles, whatever, right? But now you're talking about you have to handle those hoodwinkers from Netherlands, right? You guys know, I'm a soccer guy, and, and I, and I crack a joke, and I crack a joke, and say, you know, I'm feeling lucky here. Uh, I was in the stadium when Brazil won the World Cup in nineteen ninety-four in Pasadena. I was there, I was doing the London War Cruising with the Navy. After you finish the, the Navy Academy, you do seven months going around the world. I went to Africa, how we were, cross the, the, the Panama Canal, over the, the Panama Canal, right? And then went to, uh, South America, all the way to Brazil, seven months. And I was here July eighteen, nineteen ninety-four, I was in the stadium. And Brazil won the last World, uh, Brazil won the last, the World Cup, here we won nineteen ninety-four. The last time Brazil won was nineteen seventy, when I was born, twenty-four hours, twenty-four years prior. Now, the World Cup's gonna be US again, and the last time Brazil won the World Cup was twenty-four years ago. Anyways, I'm feeling lucky, I told everybody, right? But you know, uh, when you have a game like, uh, we had a World Cup that Iran, uh, playing Israel. It happened, you can have Turkey playing with, uh, you know, uh, 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 a country that is a adversarial country, right? But not only that, but if you put, if you put in the semifinal here, I have a question, quick question. Semifinal, have Brazil and Argentina playing here. Imagine that, oh man, it's gonna be amazing, amazing, right? Do you think it's, it's good or bad for public safety standard? Good? Real bad, we hate it, absolutely. There's not a game where Brazil play with Argentina, there's not mass fighting, who know, chaco knives, even shots and people die, daddy. And that's what soccer is, completely different than the crowd that you handle every weekend for baseball. I voiced my concern, I gave some, uh, tips. The good thing is this, the good news is, we have, December, we're gonna find out what teams are gonna be playing the first phase of the cup. Start July, Ju- June, like next year. So we're gonna know the four teams that are gonna be playing here, the same group. But the bad news is, once we advance for the second phase of the World Cup, we only gonna know the team that's gonna play, play here three days in advance. Now we have three days to do oper- oper research, operational research. Who, who are they? What, who, what country is? What the, what assessment we have about those guys? Are we gonna be talking about Irish, Netherlands, Brazilian guys, Argentina, North Korea? North Korea play the World Cup, last World Cup, right? They're gonna be spying on our cell phones, right? Those are the things that you're looking at, but you know, early warning, I gave, as much as experience I have, I gave my, my faith. But yes, looking at putting barriers, we're looking at directing traffic, we're looking at, at, at beef up with drones. We're gonna continue investing drones, uh, real-time cameras, floss camera and fuses camera all over the, the city. Uh, ideally, we should have eighteen hundred, we already nine hundred. When I get to office, we have five hundred, I, I participated in approval, another three hundred cameras. The more cameras, the more drones, the more dogs, the more cars. And personally, this is a regional event, right? So this is a regional event, all this, the, the, the police force around, around the, the DFW, it's gonna pitch in. So you're gonna have pretty much eighty percent of the force for that day, for that event, it's gonna be outside, being coordinated by Arlington Police. So that, that way, we still have policing at, at every other place in the city.
So they're gonna be using mutual aid from other cities.
Sure, sure, that's what we did with the Rangers when they won the World Series. Go ahead.
Quick, quick related question, uh...
That answer your question? Pretty good, okay.
Uh... Yes, sir, I, I just wanna ask one question related to that. Pardon? With the, uh, I know the four words, city four words has restrictions on Airbnb type operations. I, I should know that I don't, but Arlington has that. But it would seem what you're describing, there'd be a huge demand, obviously, for housing. So I'm, I'm just curious, do we have those kind of restrictions in place, you know?
No, yeah, how?
How?
No wonder why the legislature in Austin are trying to pass free Airbnb for state, right?
ADUs.
ADUs, exactly. What happened? If we are preempted by the legislature, there's not much you can do, right? But now city of Arlington has a very strong, uh, STR ordinance that restricts the use of STR whenever you want. So it has to be in certain areas. It's working pretty good. But then you have a lot of interest on it, that's the lobby for the hotel industry, that's the lobby for the, right? For the economic side, you gotta live what, what you got, sorry.
So I, I know you said you'd only been on the job for a year, is that right?
What's that?
Bill's got to a year.
One year, yes.
So you weren't here when the over fifty-year center was deciding to build out here on...
I was not here, I wasn't, I wasn't, I was not into politics, but I was in the city, yes. When you passed the ball election, and we operated the other day, I was there on the ribbon cutting the other day.
So my question is, how does the city bid capital construction projects? Do they invite contractors, they bid on it, how to decide?
There's, there's two, uh, you know, that's public, uh, public knowledge, I mean, there's two different processes that you choose, vendors and contractors for the city. RFP, RFQ, RFP requests for proposal. So that's the lowest price, highest quality, right? And in this RFQ, request for proposal. And then there's RFQ, request for qualification. So and then bring, what qualifications you bring to the project. So basically, that was a public, that was a public bidding process that had to go to the council to be approved, had to be publicized in advance, and that's how it's done. And in our job, we have under the council, I don't know if you know, we have the, how do you call, auditing, there's an auditing department, six people in the city, that all they do is auditing. They do not work for the city manager, they work for the city council. Not only the city attorney officer works for us, plus the auditing. Why? Because every time we want to see any contract or anything, I'll ask Susan, Susan, can you give me this contract? I'll go take a look at it, and I'll ask my questions to the staff. So I can tell you, the city is very well-run. And a lot of people, oh, why you raised this one second tax last year? Say, read the four hundred fifty pages of the budget first, and then you go ahead and question. Because everything's public, everything's in there. This Open Data, Open Data is very, very good, you're gonna have, you're gonna see how things are done. And myself, I'm doing this full-time. So my wife is running my business full-time, and I'm pulling forty, fifty dollars, sometimes six dollars on accounts. People that are close to me, they know. And if there's something out there, I'll find it.
The city has a project that they're going to go out to bid. First, they ask for qualifications and contractors that want to be invited to send in a proposal?
In order to do a job for any municipality, not only Arlington, okay? Any municipality in the country. RFP, RFP, request for proposal. So they say, we have this project here, and we have this much budget to do it. Or don't even say the budget, right? I don't think they say the budget. So bring the proposal. So they say, okay, five million, ten million, seven million. And then there's a commission inside the city, there's the procurement department that goes ahead and chooses which one is the best for the city. And then you submit it to the council, and then we accept it or not.
That's the proposal, what about, what do you call this?
Qualification, RFQ, request for qualification. Those are for the type of work, tough party work, that are more specific, for IT, software, engineering, right? For a specific, for a specific project that is ongoing, right? You basically want somebody with qualifications that you don't have on the workforce in the city. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. No need to wrap it up anyway, last question, one question last. Any other?
Yes, I hope.
You want, you got to lie.
I'll give the last question. Mauricio, I was with one of your constituents yesterday, and she was telling me that you are in favor of having buses for public transportation, is that true?
I like that. Well, that's a good question. We know that the residents in Arlington voted no for public transportation several years ago. The city, the city is getting to a different reality than we had twenty, thirty years ago. We do have public transportation, we do have it. So we have via, we have rapid. So and the amount of, the amount of traffic they are getting. So what is, what is good about what we have right now? I know some people say, I don't like our buses. For us to join Dart will cost us a hundred million dollars per year. That's the amount of sales taxes that we collect with all those events and everything, right? Will cost us a hundred million dollars. And we're gonna have buses riding most of the time during the days, no peak hours. They're gonna be running around the city, blowing diesel, right? And it's gonna be empty. And when it comes peak time, they're gonna be full, you won't get your seat in there. So when the city decided several years ago, which one we have right now, is the rapid and the rapid and the via. So which is really the Uber. It's really a Uber, you know, a city Uber. You have an app, you ask, you ask for the thing, come over, it's a low cost, right? Three or five dollars. Yeah, but that's, yeah, but that's not, I mean, some people say, okay, Uber takes five minutes to pick me up, the via takes thirty minutes. Okay, nothing's perfect. But do you know what is the biggest advantage of that system that we have right now?
No.
There's a hole over Arlington.
No.
For five bucks.
No.
No traffic here.
Data. Data is the, data. Data is the most valuable thing that we're doing right now. We are collecting behavior. We understanding where do they drive, where do they go, what time they do, everything. So couple of years, we know exactly if we need transportation. And I think the future is coming for amen, how to say?
Mosey.
Electric, electric amen, right? So robotic buses that take people to A to B, that justify the data that we collected over years. We know exactly what time people go, what do they do, how long it takes, and then we can back to certain.
Is this, is this service providing enough service for most people, keeping up with the trend?
Yes. Let me get the numbers here. I think it was like six hundred thousand trips per year last year, and they have only ten percent dropout rate. That means people ask for a via and it was not available. I mean, it's really good. If you go Open Data, you go on Open Data, there's transportation, you're gonna see the map, where the via is, and how many people talk, everything. All this stuff that I'm talking here, you don't need to take my word for it. Go on Open Data, all the maps are there. Every, every single report that we get from the city council, it's put on Open Data. It's available to you too. And unfortunately, you guys didn't know about it, so now you know, go ahead and do it. Just to wrap up here, so I know it was last question, okay, Carl is here, so he knows I'm a big fan of him. Historical wise, so we, we're working to bring back the Bankhead Highway, right? That's right here, right? So we have a pilot program, right, the Form Base Code, which is gonna be downtown in some areas of north of the division. Because this is, this has been here since nineteen nineteen, the Bankhead Highway, the first intercontinental, intercontinental paved highway in the nation. We have the Caravan Hotel, which is a historical hotel being opened on Collins and Division. We have the opportunity here to create a museum on the, Taco Deli Museum, with Arlington Baptists and everything between. My dream is to see this looking like nineteen forties and fifties, with neon, nice sidewalks, out of, out of hundred twenty sidewalks that we need to buy back for easement to create good sidewalks. The sidewalks are terrible, right? And it's been terrible for thirty, forty years, right? We're gonna have those sidewalks done. We are like eighty, there's only forty sidewalks that we need to buy back. And once we buy them back, we're gonna start doing those sidewalks, make it look nice, look better. That's one of the projects. And the second one, most important, is the long-term plan, which is the comprehensive plan. It's on the works. That was my campaign, right? That was my campaign, big topic was that we should not wait for two thousand thirty-five to review the long-term, the comprehensive plan that was approved in two thousand fifteen under Mayor Scott, right? And we have all the projects, pretty much catalyst projects already done. And I was big proposal of, let's do it now. And then we pick up traction, and then we are doing right now. We already have a commission, they're working on it. At the end of next year, we're gonna have a brand-new comprehensive plan with a vision for the city for the next twenty-five years, until two thousand fifty. And this new plan, I'm gonna make sure that it's calling for every three years review. We don't need to wait twenty years to review a plan. We are in the artificial intelligence, how to say, in reality right now, right? There's so much artificial intelligence, because there's no more natural intelligence, right? Right?
Only in Laos.
And in three years now, in three years now, it's like a decade back in the days, right? So every three years, we're gonna go and review that plan and make sure the plan adapts to the new reality. I mean, fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now, you know, I'll be retired, and the new generation can take advantage of the plan that we put in our, and we need your input, right? Go online on Open Data, go on the website, follow me on Mauricio Galanty, Arlington City Council District One. I update all the time, I'm very active on the social media. Come to my townhouse, shoot me a text message, talk to my friends, I'm here for you. I do not work for the city, I work for you, okay? I work for you, and for myself too, right? I'm a resident in this zone. I do not work for the city, I work for you. So I'm there to do the best for us, okay? So they are public servants, they make money, right? They have a salary, and they have to be professionals what they do, but we are here. We are your eyes and ears on the public service side, okay? Thank you so much.
And we got a hundred, I'll get you a hundred dollar chip onto River Legacy, Your Honor, and thank you for joining us. And all of you, thank you for joining us, and bring your friends. Tom, Tom was gonna bring three, and they didn't, none of them made it.
They all figured out.
But they all figured out.
You don't have any friends.
Shut up.
All right, see you, see you next month. Thank you all.
Hey, sir, sir.